Good morning, one and all. Welcome to our meeting of August fifteenth. We're commissioners and we begin as is customary with an observance of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go for the approval of the minutes of our last meeting. It's removed in second. If any additions, search, deletions, or comments or questions. Hearing none at all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Good morning.
Morning, Mrs. New.
We have received on eight thirteen and eight fourteen of one million ninety-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Brings bringing us our balance of one million nine hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and thirty-six cents. Our expenditures this week were one billion one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and two cents. And the undistributed tax claim is at thirty-six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Leaving us a balance of eight hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Move to approve the tradeers report as read.
We have a motion to accept Mrs. New's report. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so move. Thank you, Sally. Have a good day.
Sally, Director of Human Resources, Stephanie Olden, according to her. Under personnel transactions, resignations, determinations. Shira Santana Perez, General Court A, termination effective August first. Amanda Switzer, Team Clerk, resignation effective August sixteen. Kevin Schrum, Administrator at MHIDEI, retirement effective October fifth. Owen Williams, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective August twelfth. Mark Antonio Sterling, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective July twenty-seventh. Amanda Brown, Corrections Officer, resignation effective August eighth. Robin Meyer, Part-Time Correctional Officer, resignation. This is a date correction from the last meeting and that is to July thirtieth. Ani Abreu, Secretary D/ Interpreter, resignation effective August sixth.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed in second and that we accept those retirements, terminations, and resignations. Any comment or question?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Kevin Schrum, his long tenure since nineteen ninety-nine. For his wonderful service, he's been a great employee.
May I have a comment? Hearing none at all?
No, I just certainly would echo it. It was the same comments. Kevin's been a great employee. Hate to lose him.
Just to make mention, it says ninety-nine there. Kevin had a brief couple of months out, but prior to that, he was here for a couple of decades. Six or seven decades. He's here, so I'm guessing.
Okay, without the further comment, nothing else. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so ordered.
Under Ethel Malley, needs her absence, Michelle Brown, from Court's Department, two weeks of Ethel Malley, returned on August fourteenth. Heidi Patterson, from the Department of Emergency Services, six to eight weeks of Ethel Malley, effective July seventeenth, returned August ninth. Louise Matthews and VJ Disinger's office, up to one year of intermittent Ethel Malley, returned on July thirteenth. Jessica Woods, from the District Attorney's Office, one week of Ethel Malley, effective August twenty-seventh.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence as read.
Second.
It's removed in second. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, or promotions, I have two motions. First is motion to approve President Judge Tillwachs and the Director of Probation Services, Sally Berry's recommendation to add interpreter duties and pay to one of the current probation officer positions within the Adult Probation Services Department at the rate of one thousand five hundred dollars annually, effective July fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second. It's removed in second that we approve Judge Tillwachs' request. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Second motion is to approve President Judge Tillwachs' recommendation to add interpreter duties and pay to a current position within the Court's Department at the rate of one thousand five hundred dollars annually, effective July eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to add interpreter's pay to that position.
It's removed in second that we approve this request by Judge Tillwachs. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Sarah Soto, changes status from Administrative Assistant to Court Admin in Court's Department to Administrative Assistant to Court Admin/ Interpreter in the Court's Department at the rate of one thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents by weekly, with fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly interpreter pay, effective July eighth. Daniel Crick, promotion from Case Worker One in Children and Youth to Case Worker Two in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents by weekly, effective August twenty-sixth. Holly Leahy, promotion from Mental Health Program Specialist Two at MHIDEI to Administrator at MHIDEI at the rate of two thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-six cents by weekly, effective August seventh. Monica Bright, changes status from Secretary D in the District Attorney's Office to Secretary D in the Detective's Girl, no change in her rate, effective August twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approve those transactions. Any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Moving on to other transactions, Building Security would like to hire Robert Delegas as a door monitor at the rate of ten dollars and forty-four cents per hour, effective August twenty-sixth. And the prison would like to hire the following full-time correctional officers at the rate of fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents per hour, all effective August nineteenth. And that is Victoria Morales, Heidi McQuinton, Luis Martinez, David Lesberens, James Malvado, Shamar Whitmore, and rehire Austin Ritchie. And the Sheriff's Office would like to hire William Langen as a full-time correctional officer, excuse me, a full-time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-three cents by weekly, effective September ninth.
Make a motion to take care of those hirings as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. Claude Mees, longevity payment before going off the prison, two thousand five hundred dollar one-time payment, effective September twelve. Jeffrey Barnes, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one thousand one, one thousand dollar one-time payment, effective August twenty. Edward Bortuch, full-time correctional officer at the prison, longevity payment one-time, five hundred dollars, effective September twenty-sixth. Brian Alexander, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents per hour, effective September eighth. Zachary Sinoka, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents, effective September eighth. Timothy Quinlan, incremental increase, telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services, to the rate of nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents, effective September twenty-second. And the same incremental increase for Jeremy Wenberg, to the rate of nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents, effective September twenty-second. And Pierre Hest, longevity payment, part-time Assistant District Attorney in the District Attorney's Office, to the rate of two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents by weekly, and that is effective... Nine eight.
Nine eight.
Yeah, nine eights, number eight.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve those salary board changes. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under comments on our request, under mandated, Michael Yacom, except for life in Children and Youth, would like to attend MIT orientation and medical account on October eighteen, no registration fee. Mileage, mail, and full reimbursement, five credits mandated by DHS. Key Smith, from Children and Youth, would like to attend the following two conference seminars, like at your high school, Tulsa Success and State College, on October twenty-sixth, no registration fee, mileage, mail, and reimbursement, four credits mandated by DHS. And Financial Aid Workshop in Lebanon, on October fourth, no registration fee, mileage reimbursement, and three credits mandated by DHS. Christopher Frye, Jamie Chisholm, and Alex Traubman, from Probation Services, would like to attend limited officers to work practice seminars, home of September eleventh, no registration fee, no reimbursement, eight credits. Credits mandated by Fire, Arms, Education, and Training Commission. Heather Wonard, from Probation Services, would like to attend Managing the Front Desk, online webinar, on October twenty-eighth, one hundred forty-nine dollar registration... Sorry, August, on August twenty-eighth, one hundred forty-nine dollar registration fee, at one point five credits mandated by PBPP. Amanda Beiler and John Ryder, from Probation Services, would like to attend High End Mansite in Hanfield, on August fourteenth, no registration fee, no reimbursement, five credits mandated by JCJC. John Ryder and Matthew Klein, from Probation Services, would like to attend Advanced Fundamentals, Montango, and Marksmanship, in Lebanon, on September twenty-fourth, no registration fee, eight credits mandated by Fire, Arms, Education, and Training Commission. Karen Cassillo, Sarah Hummel, and Megan Bishon, from Children and Youth, would like to attend Case Worker Safety and responsiveness in child welfare practice for caseworkers in Harrisburg, on September twentieth, no registration fee, mileage, mail, and reimbursement, three credits mandated by DHS.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approve those mandated requests. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under non-mandated, Justin Stachow, from MHIDEI, would like to attend CSP training for facilitators and recorders, and worms though, on August twenty-eighth, and registration fee and mileage reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve.
It's removed in second that we approve that MHIDEI request. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I've got a proclamation for one of our own. Break so many through here, but rarely one of our own. There we are.
And one that is not written by...
Well, yeah, it's a little tricky to prepare a proclamation for someone who prepares a proclamation. I'll just start by reading if that's all right.
Yes, please do.
Whereas Kathleen Cathy Kirby began her career with the County of Lebanon, employed as a clerk typist on September fourth, nineteen seventy-nine, under the Comprehensive Employment Training Act, known as CETA. And through a series of promotions, she became the Administrative Assistant in the County Commissioner's Office on December twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-nine. Whereas during her tenure, Cathy served the county with devotion and commitment, providing order and continuity to the operation of this office. She performed her duties and responsibilities in a proficient manner, earning great credit for herself and Lebanon County Government. And whereas on September fourth, twenty nineteen, Cathy will retire as Administrative Assistant in the County Commissioner's Office with forty years of distinguished service. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of past boards of County Commissioners, past and present employees, and all our citizens unite to thank Cathy for the outstanding service she provided during her many years in the county. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and the very best retirement.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
And it is my distinct honor and privilege to second this motion for Cathy.
It's removed in second. And I just want to comment, from my time with you, it's been a pleasure and I learned a lot and I appreciate your guidance over these years and your even-handed treatment of everyone that comes into the office. That's a good talent to have in your position. Thank you for your forty years to the county.
I don't think it'll be the same. It won't be the same.
I don't typically, but I did a little math this morning and I started this job rather early and at an early age, and so I figured out that I've spent forty-five percent of my life with Cathy. For the years that I've been here. And so next to my parents and my family, I've probably spent the most time with you than anyone else. I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the county and wish you all the best.
And I'd also like to add my congratulations on just being the rock in this office. You have been here longer than all of us and you have seen it all. And your institutional knowledge will be maybe available if we pick up the phone and call you, but certainly something that is treasured and all of Lebanon County has benefited. So thank you so much. Cathy?
Yes, Cathy. Before we vote, because you don't know how the vote's gonna go.
We're trying to get three votes.
Yeah, we should better get three out of it. No comment.
No comment.
This is good.
Oh wait, we have our appreciation and I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. unanimous. Were you, so Cathy, were you...
Did you allow her a moment?
When he asked for, when Jamie asked for where these folders are, was that the way that you knew this was coming or...
Oh, I didn't know.
You guys might want to wait for the book to come out before you start praising her.
The book.
The book.
Yeah. Let's the book come out.
Gonna write the book. Gonna write the book. Oh.
Leave my chapter out.
Wait for the movie.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is the part Cathy likes.
Yes.
Thank you, Cathy. Good morning. Good morning. Please introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
I'm Kevin Schrum, Administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Group.
And I'm Holly Leahy, Director of Mental Health Services at Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention.
Thank you. We have four topics to discuss with you today, the first being the Lebanon County Human Services Plan. This document is done each year. It's developed in cooperation with the MHIDEI Department, Children and Youth, Community Action Partnership, Lebanon County Probation. A number of people in each of those departments participates. The intent is to develop a planning process to discuss what the strengths and the needs are within each of our domains and to try and address those with existing resources. It's a big document, almost an athletic, it is about ninety pages. The lion's share of that is the mental health part of the plan. I believe that's about eighty-five of the ninety pages, but Holly and Hurst have done a great job of doing an analysis of the needs and the challenges of our consumer space and put together a plan for that. As did all the other departments, certainly program focused on the U of U department and how to address that. So each one of those units has put together a plan consolidating the one county human services plan. And we are in Longgrain County, which gives us again more flexibility and some of the funding streams, the shift, and the better serving community, which is very nice. Part of the planning process includes two public hearings. We held the two public hearings. We surveyed more of the first one and the second one, and we had Dan put the first one in terms of questions and recommendations and so on, which we then incorporated and joined a new draft. And then reviewed that at the second public hearing and seemed like we were satisfied with the document that was presented at the second public hearing. And this, the document that was sent to you is a culmination of all those events and is the up-to-date, current document that reflects the participants in the public hearings as well as the public hearing that was provided at the public hearings. I think it'd be a good idea if Holly took a little bit of time to discuss some of the components of the mental health section, but I think in terms of details, it would be nice to bring over to you that piece, since it's the main component of the plan.
So it starts out with what are the highlights for the mental health services in the county. So we're able to show what we've implemented over the last year. And then also some of the things that we've lost and how we're trying to address some of those losses within the mental health program. Then it moves on to target populations, such as older adults, adults. So it breaks it down into ages as well as some of our specialized populations, such as the LGBTQI population, the cohort, the justice involved. And then within each of those categories, if you will, and we need to list the strengths. So what do we have available for those individuals and then also the needs. So where are some of our deficits? What can we address? Based upon those needs that we identify then, we must have goals to address them. So we have five goals for the upcoming year, and they're really ongoing goals, such as housing. How can we better address the justice-involved folks within our county to address their needs? Employment for individuals with serious mental illness. Also, how can we better involve individuals with serious mental illness and all components of the mental health program? And then it also asks us to talk about our suicide prevention plan. What are we implementing? What are we doing? And then also how are we addressing the governor's employment initiative? How are we really addressing that? Which again is addressed in one of our goals. That's a brief summary and it is many, many pages. But it really does highlight that we have some really great strengths here in the county with regard to the mental health program. But there are some things that we do need to work on. One of the things that would be really great, obviously, would be some additional funding. Because we have, we have worked really hard to use every dollar for the mental health services supports. But really looking for additional from the state would really help us out if we're going to implement new initiatives.
And I would add, when we discuss the funding, we, every year, we reflect on the fact that about ten years ago, we had a ten percent cut from the state in the funds. And certainly since that time, our costs have gone up, the demands for services have gone up, and we're still trying to do with what we have. I think our program and the other programs may have been pretty invested. Sort of the two options that we have right now for additional funds are shifting the Human Services Block Brain, pots of money that are allowed within the Human Services Block Brain, that we can best utilize the resources that come to all of our agencies. And the other one is health choices, reinvestment dollars that there are. If we haven't created the money from this most recent year, but we've been able to implement some great programs, such as the Fair Weather Lodge in Lebanon, with those reinvestment dollars. The challenge with the reinvestment dollars or with the shifting of dollars under the block brain is that there you have to find a program that you can use the dollars for implementing the program, but one that will become sustainable. Because it's not the dollars you're after, and you can't come to you and say, can we, now can we support this? So we try to be creative and find the implementable programs and find one to sustain before we can put them on control. So I think everybody's working as a team to try and best... Target population in each of these departments. Are we ready for the motion?
This is obviously Kevin's last time to lead this plan, so I want to say thanks for taking the lead on this. Getting everybody together to prepare this every year. Some years have been tougher and longer than others, but we seem to have a bathroom. Just in time.
Drew Strohs and I got the short straw.
And I'll make a motion to adopt the plan as presented.
Second motion.
It's removed in second. My comment is, this is the same Kevin Schrum that all those nice things were said about earlier in the meeting. In those due retirements, there were some nice comments made by him.
Thanks.
They didn't carry out some of your, we're sorry.
I can't hear what I'm doing. So I wasn't hearing anything.
All in favor of the motion to adopt the Human Services Plan, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you so much. We do have two signature pages that... With your permission, I'll move on to the next item, and that would be our contract amendments. As you know, periodically through the year, the needs of our consumers change. New providers pop up, some providers disappear. So we're in constant flux of providers and services and we need to commit a year to improve changes to those contracts. So if we look at fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we have, that was the month that ended, June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. We have fifteen changes that total seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Most of them were consumers using more services than anticipated. I will emphasize that the money is within our budget. We're not looking for additional dollars to cover the changes in those contracts.
These are good news. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year eighteen nineteen provider contract amendments with a change of total of seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Second motion.
It's removed in second. Any comment or question? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much. Again, moving on with provider contract amendments, moving to our current year, you know, we're only in, we're in August. We do have a number of changes that have come into play already. The total change has come to twenty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, even though there's much more paperwork with it. It's a relatively small amount. And most of these are related to rate increases that work from the state level and in the budget inquiries. So we're for the show dollars and permissions.
Make a motion to accept the contract changes as presented.
It's removed in second that we approve the nineteen twenty provider contract amendments. Any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much. And our final item is to discuss suicide prevention. Holly has been working very hard with the Suicide Prevention Task Force on initiatives for the general weekend this time of the year. And September will be suicide prevention on. So Holly, if you want to talk a little bit about some of the activities that are going on.
Sure. So the team has not worked diligently to really put together events again for September. And we have quite a lot happening again this September twenty nineteen. We have classes, some trainings, and I just want to highlight just a few things that are specific to this year. On Saturday, September fourteenth, at Clay on a Playground, we'll be presenting a You Matter Inside Out. So what we'll be doing is showing the Disney Pixar Inside Out movie. And I'm relating that during the presentation that really talks about how you matter, we all matter, and I'm really giving a good message in addition to that. On Tuesday, September seventeen, is a youth suicide awareness conference. It'll be an all-day conference at Church of the Good Shepherd. In the morning, there'll be a keynote speaker, and then in the afternoon, there's some really great breakout sessions. And then we also have our remembrance ceremony. And then, we also have our Remembrance Ceremony that will be happening on Thursday, September 26. And that is when we invite individuals who have lost loved ones to suicide to come out to the Remembrance Ceremony, to be able to meet with other loved ones, individuals who have lost to suicide, to know that they're not alone and that they too have hope and hope and that we are all there for them. So, if anyone would like to have their loved one memorialized on paper, they're able to do so, they could just call our office and we'd be happy to place a name on a paper. So, yeah, there's a lot more happening than just what I highlighted. I do have some of the flyers and information I guess we give you in little packets. And if you could help us in any way to get the word out, there is a lot happening and we would love for the whole community to be able to really join together to learn more about how we can all really come together to meet the needs of our community and what's happening within our community. Thank you.
Whereas suicide dramatically affects the residents of Lebanon County, whereas every effort is being made to reduce the rate of suicide among our citizens, whereas Lebanon County supports community partners in their work to enhance mental wellness and recovery in our citizens, and whereas Lebanon County recognizes the efforts of the Lebanon County Suicide Prevention Task Force to prevent suicide by community-wide trainings and awareness efforts throughout the year and especially during this month of September. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the commissioners, by the Board of County Commissioners that September is Suicide Prevention Month in Lebanon County.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation of suicide prevention.
Second motion.
Kevin, would you mind just giving us an update where we are at this year?
Yes, for 2019, we currently have a total of 13 suicides per year. Statistically, that puts us on track with Lance Chair, right? And then we get up to two. Demographically, it's the same profile individuals. It's middle-aged white males who died by use of firearm. It's rare that we, occasionally we have a female, occasionally we'll have a young person, occasionally we'll have an old person. But again, statistically, when you look at the overall numbers, it's middle-aged white males. And it's been that way for many years, and that matches the statistics throughout Pennsylvania and the national as well.
It's suicidal.
Thank you.
Sad.
It is sad. And it affects more than a person that got it. There are family members, there are friends, there are neighbors, there are coworkers, classmates. It just has such an awful effect and that's the community.
Motion has been made. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate your support, all this and the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kevin, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I wish I had more details on this because it was something that I read some time ago about a study of, I believe it was a thousand suicide deaths by a major university, not in Pennsylvania, but what they were looking at was cause and effect for suicide. They were finding that a significant number of people who had been taking opioids and other things to alleviate their pain were being cut off of their pain medication and simply couldn't stand the pain anymore and took their lives for that reason. Are you seeing any of that at all?
I can't say I've never seen it, but it certainly isn't common in the statistics that we have. Dr. Yonkers and I have some discussion about it, you guys are into suicide and, you know, look for a lie. Sometimes there's no lie, but many times it's about a relationship issue or, or mental illness, or sometimes substance abuse, but we see more issues related to alcohol in the cases we see of suicide than we do with the opioids. But it does happen on the future. Thank you. Sure.
I'm sorry, did you lose your hand? I'm sorry, did you lose your hand? Also, I was right by the speakers.
Contact chair.
What? What? Thank you. Thank you. How's Sally, how are you?
Good. You've been around a couple of weeks.
I'm always good.
Shuri, good to see you today.
Hi.
Good morning. If you'd like to introduce yourself, then you may proceed.
Shuri, Francis Brown of the County GIS Department. So, I came to discuss the Pennsylvania multi-party geospatial data sharing agreements, like a handful. So, basically what that is, is it's serving as a vehicle for counties to share data with the state. Some counties required a data sharing agreement. So, the problem that the state was running into was there was many agreements, it was having to go through solicitors, it's having to go through the state's lawyers, and this was really bogging them down. So, they came up with one agreement that all the counties can sign and share data with the state. So, we've, we've always shared data with the state and we then have an agreement that we required them to sign. We just provided it, told them that it was for state use, and that has been serving us well. To this point, this is something that they're now asking all the counties to sign. In the future, you know, kind of in conjunction with this, there's a big question to state now for open data. And some of our neighbors have signed on to open data. Dolphin County has, I think Burke County's looking into it. One of the other counties in our region, York County, is now open data, which means that you have a website, a website basically that folks go to and they can just download data and use it for free. So, that's where things are going. Just to kind of let you know, this is a step in that direction, I believe. So, what the state's asking for is, you know, sign this agreement doesn't mean you have to share any data. You can share whatever data you want to share, but understand that any data that we do share will be part of the state's base map and will be made, be made available to the public and will be available for download. That includes tax parcels. So, with the tax parcels, they're saying you could provide us a minimum of a PIN. So, what I tend to find is that folks are interested in owner names and addresses and some of the other accessory data that comes along with the tax parcels. So, I guess this is twofold. Number one, we have to decide, do we want to sign an agreement? Which I don't see much harm to because it's up to us what we share. The real discussion comes in is what do we want to share? You know, understanding that this is now going to be open to the public, which some of the data that we've already been submitting for Next Gen 911 and some of the other projects, that's all part of being open and shared anyway. So, our roads, the address points that we're having developed right now, they will be shared. So, a lot of things are moving in that direction. So, that's really where we kind of have to think. Number one, do we sign the agreement, which I don't find too threatening, to what is it we're going to share?
Let me ask you, if we would go with the open concept, would that put a dent in the right-to-know requests? Is a lot of the information then?
Probably just the ones that ask for tax parcels when they want an overall county-wide tax parcel. So, not a big one. Not a big one. Not a big one. I guess my question would be, what's, you know, right now, anybody can go on the county's website and see tax parcel information, some tax, limited information, and then we have the CAMA sign in, you know, that's a subscription.
Correct.
Would the, would the data that's being shared, did the state be limited to basically what's already on the county's website?
It could be less. It could be what we had now.
Okay, so we can decide to maybe just match what's on the county's website?
At a minimum, they would want the geometry and they would want the UPI. That's the minimum that they would want. And if they had that, they say then that's fine. And then that still would require folks to come back to us for the owner, the owner address, the assessed values, and so on. Or we could throw the whole enchilada at them if that's what we want to do.
Well, it would seem to make sense to me to provide what is equal to what is provided on the county's website. That way, we don't, at this point, maybe in the future, we have to have a further discussion, but at this point, we don't impact the subscriptions that are, that are being made, you know, with assessment office and that sort of thing. Is that, is that accurate?
Probably not because now, the folks that purchase the data now, they want the geometry, which from the website, they don't get the geometry. So, they can go and they can look at it and they can find out who the owner is and that type of things. Like if they're doing a plan or if they, let's say, tell the atlas, they will, there's, there's websites out there that take your partial, purchase our parcel data and then they have that out there, you know, on the web for other folks to see. Those type of folks probably wouldn't need to purchase that in the future. They would get that from the open data or from the state, from state base map. They would get it from that information. So, that's really what we're talking about here is like what happens in the future. We'll probably cut down on some of the revenue that we see, which isn't a huge amount, to be honest, some of the revenue that we see from data sales.
Does the decision on what to provide go at the same time as the agreement or the agreement's first?
No, those can be two separate, those are two separate things. If we wanted to sign the agreement, again, I see no heartburn in signing the agreement and as long as we understand whatever we share will be made publicly available. And I see no heartburn really with tax parcels and PIN, but that's a conversation we should probably have.
Just a little more data.
Shuri, I go back a ways and I was there lobbying to get GIS for the county of Lebanon and walked down the hallway to the water authority and was able to get things through. Back then, the point I'm getting to is that the county and the water authority split the tab. We still do. And so, we were very guarded with our information because we wanted to be able to get revenue back because it comes from our real estate tax dollars. Since that time, the state has started helping to pay for flyovers and they didn't do that before. And of course, we're getting funding from the telephones and things of that nature. So, it seems only right to share some of the data, but I do believe that if we just do the first part today and then the second part, I don't know if it's asking too much of you to make a list and suggestion, maybe working with Jamie, on what we should release for the rest. Can we do it that way?
Sure.
Absolutely. Well, then I'll make a motion to move ahead with the presentation on sharing the contract only at this time.
Okay. Second motion. It's been moved in second and further discussion or clarification if needed. Good? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. You got it? First step.
We'll work towards figuring it out. Yep, all right.
Thanks, Shuri.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Well, Jamie's bringing our next agenda item. Sean, would you just like to introduce yourself quickly for us? You're a candidate for an Eagles scout, is that what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
Echon, where are you from and so on?
I'm Sean. I'm from Cornwall, at year 415, and I'm about to be a senior at Cedar Crest High School.
Very good. Thanks for attending the meeting today.
Thank you.
Just started. Word of the team. Is it? Is that because Sean, you introduced yourself, you're going to have to shorten your presentations a little?
Yes, sir.
We are sort of up against a hard break. So, I guess there wasn't a trouble. After this, we'll just know that you said, you need us to speed up or?
Yeah, just get to the bottom line. It's bad news.
You don't have to talk about the last two weeks. You'll be happy to leave that out.
Last night was some bad news.
All right. If you'd like to begin by introducing yourselves and then you may, go ahead.
Mike Paddaselli with Stephen Douglas. We're here to discuss the second quarter performance of the pension plan. With me at my business partner, Brad Hong, who's from Stevens. So, obviously, you've had the handouts there, the review packets, and we just kind of dig right into it since time is of the essence. On the first page there, on the left-hand side, you'll see a combined portfolio line there that shows just for the second quarter, the pension performance was 3.81%. Another pretty strong quarter after a very good first quarter. And that puts our year-to-date return through the second quarter at 14.33%. And again, another, just a really good start to the year. A little bit how we got there on the, on the right-hand side, you'll see we started the quarter at 123,741. For the quarter, we had net contributions and then mostly that's because of the art payment that was made during the quarter. We had a net contribution of 635,804 and we had appreciation of 4.7, 4 or 5 million dollars. We were able to finish the quarter at 129,122,639. So, again, very, you know, very good numbers.
And that's the end of June?
That's through the end of June, right. Yep. Kind of in the lower left-hand corner there, you'll see our, the allocation for the pension plan. We do break out REITs. I know the report here doesn't show that, but I'll start with equities, breaking out the real estate investment trust portfolio. Total equities is 59.05%. That's kind of right up against the limit of our target within our investment policy. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. The real estate investment trust piece represents 5.6% of the portfolio. Fixed income you'll see there is 29.33% of the portfolio. And we have almost 6% in cash, cash on hand, which we utilize for distributions, monthly distributions. We work with Bob on that. But there's also some cash that the individual money managers have as part of their management philosophy. So, we have cash as about 6%.
What was the next we agreed to on the alts?
On the, we don't really have alts here. Re, real estate investment trust is a sleeve in your investment policy and though some folks categorize that as an alternative investment, we don't necessarily do that, but we could go up to 10% in rates.
Mr. Controller, if you have any questions?
I will move to, you know, kind of give you a little bit more up-to-date since we had a July that was, you know, was okay, but we have gotten a little more volatility here in the last few days, the last couple of weeks really. Brad will talk a little bit about the economy and kind of what was causing or what is causing some of the volatility. But through Tuesday, the pension value, total value was 128,379,949. But through Tuesday, the pension value, total value was $128,379,972. And we still had a performance of 14.73%. That's an un-audited number, but that's as best as we can get today. Any allocation is virtually the same, so no, no changes there.
It's not a huge, as much of a blow as I thought it was going to be.
No, we, we gained a little bit in July and we've lost some of that now here in August with the first couple of weeks. So we're still kind of hanging in there.
Turns around again until we come back?
Yeah. Hopefully we can give you some good numbers in the third quarter, but some things that we're kind of recommending, because we have had some good performance, I think, you know, we've kind of allowed the portfolio to kind of ebb and flow. In 2008, when the markets were coming down, we kind of stayed the course, even though it was slightly out of the investment policy ranges. But we're feeling a little bit more that we should kind of get back to our norms within the investment policy. So we're kind of at the upper end of our equity number and just feel like maybe right now, potentially some more volatility as after yesterday, the headline right now is recession, right? Brett will talk a little bit about that. So we just think it's probably prudent to kind of get back to more, you know, where our, where our investment policy is stated, kind of get back kind of to the middle of the road. So some things that we'd like to do is actually raise a little bit of cash, about $2.5 million. And that'll help us with our distributions. That'll get us probably seven to eight months worth of distributions with cash on hand. That way we don't have to go and sell anything if we do get into a debt market. We'll have the cash raised and it'll, you know, it'll be a good thing. We are also a little bit heavier over the last five, six years. Large cap growth has done extremely well and we have some of that in the portfolio. So the growth component has, has gone up much quicker than large cap value. And so we like to kind of take a little bit away from growth and move some of that over to value as well. So if we make some of those changes, we'll be looking at, at the end of the day, the stocks would be around 55%. Bonds would end up around 31.5%. REITs would stay the same, roughly 5.5%. And we have a cash position of about 10%. All those fit within your investment policy and again, you know, we just think it's time to get more back to, closer to where the midpoints are in the investment policy. I'm changing any managers or anything, just the managers that we have working all within the policy existence.
Right. Brett?
Okay, so talking a little bit about risk analysis, sometimes we'll just kind of briefly mention that, or we come in, but a lot of times we'll have a money manager or something like that with us and try to be respectful of the time that they would need. But that is something that behind the scene, Mike and I and Sonya are regularly looking at. And risk analysis is more than just trying to get things to go up and up and up. Obviously, everybody likes it whenever we come in and the numbers are green and it's positive, but we want to make sure that we're being, again, prudent in how we're trying to get there, not taking on unnecessary or undue risk that we don't need to. But what happens, I think, a lot of times too, is kind of when people are looking on the news and, you know, we start getting concerned and say, how much risk are we actually taking? And you hear on a financial channel, or whether it's the radio or whatever the case might be, TV, news, print, a lot of times there's concerns that people are talking about different things. But I wanted to just kind of give a couple of quick numbers here, and this is not comparing apples to apples, but what you're typically going to hear about on the news is the stock market. That's what everybody's quoting. And as Mike just told you, the portfolio is not in stocks. It's a little over half in stocks and the remainder is in either cash or bonds, which tend to be more conservative. But just to kind of give a little color to some of that, January through August, Mike had mentioned the portfolio was up 14.73%. And the stock market during that time, the S and P 500 and the Dow Jones were up 12.5 was the Dow and the S and P 500 was up 16.3 quarters. So, you know, we're not keeping up with the S and P 500, but we also don't have all stocks. We're not comparing apples to apples. But just to kind of go back to a couple of other timeframes, if you look at the fourth quarter of last year, if you remember, that was not such a great period of time. And the portfolio at that time was down around 8% for October, November and December of 2018. And the S and P was down about 14% during that time and the Dow was down about 12. So, you know, there's a lot of panic, we could read the headlines, people tend to get a little bit anxious, but again, just a reminder, the pension is not in all stocks, so we're not following whatever the TV is saying at the time. Last thing I'll just mention here, one more, is the month of May. The month of May was a difficult month. The portfolio was down about 3 and 1/3, 3.3% during that particular month. The S and P 500 was down 6.5 and the Dow Jones was down was 7. So again, just because you see something on TV that's real positive or even real negative, we're not following that. This is just trying to reemphasize, don't be too panicked if you hear something on the news. Now, just to kind of move over to this piece here that we handed out, just going to touch on just a couple of pages real quickly. ClearBridge is Legg Mason, the growth piece of the portfolio, and they were with us about a year, year and a half ago, I think, is when they had come in and kind of give them a presentation. This is just some of the intellectual capital, some of the research items that we get. I think they do a good job of making it kind of simple to understand a little bit of what's going on. And I asked you to turn to page three, and I took the liberty of just highlighting a few yellow spots in yours, the pieces that you have. But a lot of the presuppositions that we kind of have in our mind that are talked about, again, whether it's in the news media of some kind or whatever, or something you might be reading, is talked about, this is the longest expansion we've ever had in U.S. history. And that is true, it is the longest expansion we've ever had. But on page three, if you notice that teal colored line going along the bottom, it shows from right to left, it is the longest expansion the U.S. history has ever had. But if you notice, the average rebound or the average return during an expansion mode is 23%, and we haven't reached that yet. So Mike and I are not sitting here trying to say we're going to get to 23% and, but we're not trying to say that, you know, this thing's just going to continue to go on forever. But the point is, sometimes when we hear these things, well, it's the longest expansion we've had in U.S. history, it has to, something bad has to happen. And that's not entirely true. But I just wanted to point that out on page three. Page four?
So if I could just pause there.
Yeah.
So theoretically, it would should have been a scarier time in the 1960s while things were climbing and, you know, so waiting for the bottom to fall out then would have been a scarier time than now.
That's, that's fair. Obviously, we have more data today looking back, they're tracking things, so we have a little more today than at the end, but that's fair with the way you're reading it. Page four is just kind of a review of that in a different format. You can see at the top there, U.S. June 2009 to present, and underneath it is U.S. 1990 to 2001. Again, this expansion is slightly longer, you can't tell hardly from two different bar charts there. But I highlighted the one at the bottom there that says Australia, 1992 through present. Australia's been in a expansion mode for several decades. And again, we're not trying to say that we're going to continue to do that, but a lot of times when you're hearing something, people are talking about this thing's going on too long, it has to come to an end. You need to have something fundamental or factual to say, this is why it's coming to an end. And thus far, the economy right now continues to remain pretty strong. Markets have been very volatile, Mike referenced there, but the economy itself continues to remain quite strong. Page five, this is, I like the way ClearBridge describes this. It's very simple, red light, yellow light, green light. Red bad, yellow's caution and green is good. So this is kind of what's going on. Again, if we flip on the news, hear the stock market, oh, it was a wonderful day, or it was just an awful day, but this is kind of what's going on under the surface, if you will, kind of the rumblings under the surface. And the two columns that are listed there, we have June of 2019, and you can see several items are red. One of the items is yield curve and one of the items is commodities, and there's some yellow on there and some green mixed in. And then the next column, we're just kind of compares the first quarter of this year. And you can see that things have deteriorated a little bit compared to what they had been earlier this year. Does it make sense a little bit, any questions on that at all?
Just a layperson question.
Sure.
What's the weight of a yield curve to a wage growth? Are they somewhat equally weighted or, I mean, if you look at this, it looks like they're pretty good shape.
Yeah, so they, I don't know, you can associate a weighting to it at times. Say Wall Street, stock investors, bond investors, kind of a real broad sense of the term. At times, Wall Street's focused on different things. Sometimes it's focused on unemployment rate, like you talked about their wage growth, kind of are people making more money? Sometimes it's focused on interest rates, sometimes it's focused on Kim Jong-un starts to shoot more missiles off, everyone's paying attention to that. That focuses on different things at different times. So I think, to answer your question, Commissioner Phillips, it, it focuses on different things at different times. So sometimes, you know, wage growth is more important, other times yield curve is more important. It just kind of depends on where we're at in the business life.
Very good, Sherry.
Other questions with that? So I have to go to page six, the next page back. And page six, all this does is just put the far left column I have highlighted there that says current, and this is just past recessions. So you can kind of just simply at a glance kind of compare, not to be elementary about it, but there's a lot of red in the past recession times. So the point is, obviously, I think everyone in the room knows on a recession, but the numbers are still, we would consider them to be somewhat optimistic even still in the underlying economy. And then just to keep you on your toes, we turned pages seven and eight, so I would ask you to.
Page six, so these are the, these are the variables that foreshadow things, and then it says the overall signal suggests caution.
Correct.
And that's a statement.
It is, it is, yeah, yeah. So, so as I mentioned on that prior page, you just, you know, things have continued to deteriorate here in the last few months here, I should say. And if you look at the bottom of your page, so we'll make sure we're on the same page, page seven, if you will, and this is during the financial crisis. So during the second quarter of 2006, again, those highlighted areas kind of going across the top there, we were sitting down with a difficult investor during that time, their account was still continuing to grow during that time. And you can see the different factors underneath it are, you know, somewhat similar maybe to today, if you will. Fourth quarter of 2006, again, their account was continuing to grow, but underneath the surface, things continued to deteriorate, if you will. Second quarter of 2007, starting to get a little bit more anxiousness, the markets are starting to get a bit more choppy. Again, under the surface, we see more yellow, a little bit of green and more red. Fourth quarter of 2007, the markets started getting very volatile at that time. And when we were sitting down with clients, you know, obviously a lot of anxiety, but the point is, is what ClearBridge was reporting even at that time, things had fully and pretty much completely deteriorated and things were heading in the wrong direction. And then obviously, the second quarter of 2008, when we're in the middle of recession, you can kind of see how that's reflective at that time. So I guess what we're trying to kind of, I guess, point out here is things have been slowing some. Here in the U.S., things have been slowing primarily based on, really was been going on outside the United States. We're such a global economy today, at one time, whatever happened here kind of stayed here. But when you have a country like China, the world's second largest economy, when they have a slowdown and they are in a slowing mode, for sure, they're going through a lot of pretty significant growing pains. When that's happening, that affects everybody and that affects the rest of the world. So that's been a little bit of a negative on us here more recently.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions at all?
Gordon?
How much of an impact have, in the recent two weeks, has the trade war with China been having and what would be your assessment if for some reason the president were going to be able to clear it all up? What would be the impact?
Well, it was, I mean, if they were able to come to some kind of agreement in a short period of time, obviously that would be a positive for the markets. The trade deal with China really goes way beyond the investment world. It would have a long-term positive impact on our economy. Ironically enough, a week and a half ago, our CEO, Ron Kraszewski, was on CNBC and was being asked a little bit about, you know, all this conversation around the trade war right now. And he asked the folks who were being interviewed there on the, on the channel, and he said, how long did it take NAFTA to get put into place? And everyone's kind of looking at each other, and he said, seven years. And as Americans, we, and I'll include myself in that, I want a China deal, let's get a China deal done in the next 60 days, what's the deal? And I felt that kind of did a good job of bringing in the perspective that these things take time and the process of doing that can be painful at times. And we've seen the volatility when the trade rhetoric goes up, we see the markets pull back, so.
Any questions at all? Good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Took a long time to get heard, is it?
Decades. You're welcome.
We're sort of in a little bit of a time crunch, so come back, introduce yourself while you're passing out the papers. That would be appreciated, that's just what we do.
Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. I'm here, I'm here to contribute today requesting approval for a software purchase. This is for Spanish language, so this is in addition to the sales agreement with the SNS that we had with the election wear system and so requesting. So the software is actually going to be credited by the SNS since it was overlooked in the original agreement. What I'm asking for is the support, which over four years would be for a total of $5,860 billed at $1,465.
So moved. We moved in second of that, we appropriate that money for the election books. Any question or comment? Home favorite, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sides, so moved. Can I stay?
Thank you.
Easy, easy.
Good morning.
John?
Good morning.
Hello. Okay, John, introduce yourself and tell us why you're white and you are here.
All right, thank you, thank you Chairman Todes. Good morning, I'm John Schott with the Probation Services here representing Sally Barry, who's Director of Probation Services. I'm here to request your authorization to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole for continuing grant and aid assistance for improvement of adult probation services for the new fiscal year. This is part of a five-year contract between the county and the Board of Probation and Parole for grant and aid assistance, but under the terms of the contract, counties are required to make application annually for that kind of assistance. For the record, for the new fiscal year, the start of July 1st, we are requesting $1,308,102. Also, for the record, the last year requested amounts similar to that, we received grant and aid funding from the Board of Probation and Parole in the amount of $79,497, somewhat of disparity there. It is my understanding, and I want you to receive grant and aid assistance for improvement of probation services, a probation department must show or demonstrate that it is compliant with at least 90% of the state. by the state, we were found to be 100% compliant with the state's standards and guidelines. So I think that puts us in a very good position to continue to receive accredited funding for the new fiscal year, which is not necessarily 1.3 million. But I do think, I'm sure that, I'm very confident that we'll be getting the assistance, that we made the case that we are compliant, that we adhere to the state's standards. The other thing is, the application does not propose the addition of any addition of new staff members for the department in the new fiscal year. We are down some positions with their existing positions, but we are not looking to actually expand the staff complement for the new fiscal year. So I do have the application, which requires some signatures. Any questions, I will be happy to answer.
I'll make a motion that we sign a agreement for the granting program.
Second motion.
There's a motion in the second. Any question or comment? Only ones. Not in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Most same signs, so moved.
Thank you for your questions. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, John. All right, Jen.
All right. Well, we're not asking for any money. This is a good thing.
If you'd like to take a moment just to introduce yourself to your colleague there, and then proceed.
Yes. Jennifer Cuso, President of Visit Lebanon Valley.
And I'm Paige Reddick, and I'm a marketing assistant for the...
As you know, Mary was an associate of ours at our office for quite some time, and she left in the spring and went on to greener pastures, I suppose. And so my thought process was that Mary's role was more of an admin and do administrative as well as featuring history and some of her strengths. But as we looked at the necessity of our office and how our roles were changing, we ended up asking for a marketing assistant and specializing in social media with Facebook and Instagram and blog posts, and that's why you see Paige in front of us. What in the world is that? I don't understand.
That dude's come in and said it all out, and I promise it was working very well. Oh.
Do you pronounce your hand out? Have your display...
We want the entire...
You can just listen.
Okay.
Just do what you can do. I saw the sheriff messing with that.
Who shot the sheriff?
So, yeah, if you just want to...
Okay.
Because, you know, you're doing good work, so...
Well, thank you.
Second story.
We're going to just start by talking about... Then we can sit down. Thank you for Plan B.
Yeah, sure.
Yes. Our, our mission at Visit Lebanon Valley, and I have been in this position for about a year and a half now, we've been going gangbusters about promoting the county outside the county and as well as inside the county. Farm fresh produce and our agriculture is increasingly important, as we have just added another staff member to our office, and I call her Lebanon Lily. She is a 100-pound cow and a resin cow that we purchased as a kind of selfie spot, that people can come in and get their picture taken. Because, you know, we're not New York, we're not slick, and that's okay, but we have to be honoring the agriculture and the beauty of our land and the positives that we have. So we had the children come in through an Easter Bunny Hunt, and they all put a name in a hat, and Lily was the winner, so they named the cow Lily. And there was a Lily Coleman back in the history books, so married to Robert, so we felt that Lebanon Lily was the name of our cow. So we also had a presence at the Lebanon Area Fair this year as a selfie stand with a little head of Lebanon Lily in a picture frame that people, on a barn door, that people could, could attend and enjoy. That is our mission, to represent the Lebanon Valley, exactly who we are and what we're doing. Some of the new things that we've added this year, I'm working on an architectural trail to highlight some of our downtown buildings, and we will kick that off on first Friday of September with a WQIC live broadcast, and we will do walking tours downtown, but they will also be self-guided for anyone that can't attend that day and pick up the information. And it's an exterior architectural tour, and we had Bob Hoffman also, you know, weigh in on that and make sure that everything we're representing is correct. Another new addition this year, in addition to our shopping and antiquing trails that we did last year, and our history trails that we did last year, we added a family fun itinerary this year. And I was planning to show you all our ads and all our radio promotions that we did, but the family fun itinerary has been a big hit this summer, and it's really highlighting things in the Lebanon Valley that, you know, we all know and love, but if, if they're not in bite-sized pieces that we can all easily see, we forget about it. Of course, the roller rink in Mount Gretna, and laser tag and escape rooms featuring the Blue-Eyed Six, and mini golf, and ice cream, and Mount Gretna, and Coleman Park, and these are all the things that we promoted on the radio as well as on, in print ads throughout Baltimore and throughout Pennsylvania, through Pinpoint Magazine, and through recreational news, COTUS, as a press release went out, Mount Gretna was honored nationally. Forders is a travel guide that puts out recommendations to people, kind of like a trip advisor, but it's a printed guide, and like Fromers is also one. But Forders had an article that said, "The Top Fifteen Lakeside Communities Where You Should Spend Your Summer." And Mount Gretna, out of the nation, Mount Gretna was number 14. So we really ran with that and got some press out of that, just kind of an attaboy, you know, bragging about ourselves, but...
Well, I think we could catch, you know, what you're trying to show us this morning, add it onto a workshop on Wednesday at some point, do you think?
Yeah, I would love that. I thought we...
Would we do justice to what you're doing?
I, it's so visual.
Yes.
It's important to see. And of course, we've also added the libations trail. So in addition to family fun, and the outdoor guide has been in existence since last year, and we've been getting a lot of mileage with that. And of course, all our outdoor promotions include kayaking, and hiking, and biking, and we had a Harrisburg promotion that every week we talked about, featuring the four different things from the outdoor guide, the hiking one week, the biking one week, the waterways one week, and the wildlife another week. And Lancaster actually, radio and, and print, were promoting the family fun, and we gave away passes to the Jigger Shop, and we gave away passes to Cornwall Iron Furnace and the Lebanon Area Fair. Which brings us to the fair. You know, we had a lot of fun, and we did a live broadcast on Thursday evening for the goat yoga. I don't know, I've done a lot of things for this job already, but that was, one for the record books. Those goats were very interesting. But it was, it was a fun day, and it just shows, it highlights our agriculture, but in a fun way, you know, something new and different, and I loved it. So then I did touch on the libations trail, the wineries, breweries, and distilleries in the Lebanon Valley. We have T-shirts, we have coasters, we have posters, and London Dairy Limousine in Palmyra has agreed to offer these libation trail tours. For a four-hour tour in their limo, you pick four locations that you would like to attend, and, and they do individual tours. So that was the next step with all of those good things. I'm just going through so quickly, I'm sorry. I wonder if I could play this radio spot in light?
Looking for some family fun this summer? Paddle the scenic waterways of Sweter Creek with Coco Kayaks. Find old-school skating at Mount Gretna Roller Rink, or enjoy a day of fun in the sun at Mount Gretna Lake and Beach. Find out why the Jigger is a favorite treat at the Jigger Shop. Cornwall Memorial Park has walking trails, playgrounds, and picnic areas for the family to enjoy. Check out visitlebanonvalley.com for fun ideas on the road less traveled to Lebanon Valley.
So it gives you an example. There was an event that I worked a year and a half on coming to fruition, that happened this, maybe three weeks ago. I have been in contact with the state, Pennsylvania's tourism executives. Carrie Lepore is the Deputy Secretary from the Department of Community and Economic Development, Office of Marketing, Tourism, and Film, which is quite a mouthful, but she is lovely and wonderful. And Michael Chappelloni is the Executive Director of the PA Tourism Office. So I have asked the two of them, when I went to Harrisburg, and said, "Have you been to the Lebanon Valley lately?" "No, we really haven't." I said, "It's so close, give me one day, just give me one day, and I'll give you a little whirlwind tour, and, you know, you owe that to me." Okay. So a year and a half, I kept on asking them, and I never heard anything back, and I thought, "This is never going to happen." And finally, Michael called and said, "We, we have a day for you, we're going to give you this day, we're going to come, we're yours, whatever you want to do." So I got all excited, and I thought, "Okay, how do I make the most out of this, and how do I take them everywhere and represent everything I can in one day," which was really, literally, maybe five hours that they gave me. So I set up a luncheon with about 20 community members, like the hotel representatives, Gretna Theater, and Gretna Music, and the Expo, and the Chamber of Commerce. And we all met and had a roundtable with these two executives, talking about the future of tourism, and their direction, and funding, and the things they're doing for, you know, all of their DMOs throughout the state. And overall, it was really a wonderful day. Of course, we did a flyby tour of Cornwall Iron Furnace, and the Tweed Weasel Gift Shop, and we went to Mount Gretna to the lake, and Coleman Park, and we went to St. Luke's Episcopal Church, and, and just, of course, our office and the market was closed that day, but I think they got a good taste, and of course, Works, you know, candies, and they got a good taste of how important it is to us that they represent us as well as they can, and that we are all serious about tourism and working so hard to represent ourselves properly, so...
May I just ask you to hit the pause button?
Yes.
Jamie, how are we? We have an 11 o'clock...
Oh, my gosh, okay.
No, I, no, but...
Maybe you can, like, push that 15 minutes?
What's your view?
I'm, I'm literally two minutes away. Is that all right?
Please, more business, do something else.
Can you just, I just have a few things there for that. Go ahead, and wrap it up.
Okay, I will wrap it. The, one of the last things, I have packets with all our libation trails, and our outdoor guide, and some of the itineraries that we created. Our front cover of our guide features a picture from William Works, and it's Middle Creek, it's a beautiful picture. And we won a photo contest recently, I submitted his picture, and it's now on 46,000 Lebanon County phone book covers. So we have the little phone book cover, and on the inside, it has a little blurb about this was taken at Middle Creek, and it was by William Works, and it's represented Visit Lebanon Valley, and our outdoor guide, and our website, just a little, little self-promotion, but honestly, it's William's honor as well. So, thank you so much. No, I'm sorry, I have...
We do want you back to give us a full-blown, you know, workshop on a Wednesday, because we do want, and this is vital to our county. And Paige will give you a chance to say a few words as well, and then you get another chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see it's on a daily basis, Jen. You know, it's unfortunate to talk to you further. I told you to turn it to the left.
I think we moved to a level because of the position. Running too late. I couldn't not go for it, okay?
Thank you, Jen.
Sorry about that.
Office for the, I don't know how much it is. Take not more than a few minutes. Keep the appeal on track, I mean, it's still, well, probably get it done by the time we create the operating. All right, well, let's, all right, I've got three items. I've got a medical assistance transportation program contract for a driver, you know, Williams Gene, for the 2019, '20 medical assistance transportation program.
Take a motion to approve the medical assistance contract.
Not in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Most same signs, so moved. And I've got resignations, two resignations from the Lebanon County Commission for Women, from Dr. Elizabeth Attaki and Linda Jackson, who have been suspended, their resignations have been made eighteen. Second, they accept those resignations. Come, there are questions here, not in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Most same signs, so moved. And I have one disabled veteran exemption for John W. Sammer of Wrightwall Street, Lebanon.
Do you have a motion that we accept the real estate tax exemptions for the veteran?
It's been moved, and second, they accept that taxes, property tax exemption request? Any comment or question? Not in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Most same signs, so moved.
And I make a motion that the county can research bidding on the purchase of C.R. Hayden to bring it back to the county. They put it up for sale at the bankruptcy court yesterday. Well, we have $7.8 million left from the original sale that we could use to bid on it. And if there's no other bidders, we might get it. So I think it would be foolish not to look at it. And if we look, we have a professional plan on file, and we also have, no longer have to subsidize, the expenses are very clearly defined for Renova Center, and Elder Pierre is no longer there. So there's lots of things that we know what to do to make Cedar Haven viable and do a good job. Our residents deserve a sincere look at this.
Phil?
I have no comment. I think if they are choosing as a business in Lebanon County to, to sell, I think it should be in the hands of the private sector, and we shouldn't be competing against other nursing homes in Lebanon County and take it off the tax roll. So the care is obviously of the residents is the dominant thing in our minds, and the Department of Health is responsible for making sure that that happens. And I'm certain that they will continue to make sure that our residents receive good care, no matter who the owner.
My only comment would be that Franklin County sold their nursing home in 2013. We sold ours in 2014. We used the same agent to sell the nursing homes. And I talked to one of the Franklin County Commissioners at the CCAP conference, and since that sale took place in 2013, the whole mess changed hands six times. So those, that's, that's the nature of the business.
And that's so sad. You've got all these people, our residents, and county, well, the people who live here that have nothing, the indigent, are in Cedar Haven, and you also have our former employees or whoever's working there now. It's constant upheaval for them. It's not fair. The county should look at buying it back.
Anything else?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, but anything else, I could make a, stand adjourned.